Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, January 14, 2004. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas Garcetti, Gruel, Han, Labange, Ledlow, Misakowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Viaragosa, Weiss, Lain, Padilla, 11 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Viaragosa moves. Mr. Labange seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Gruel moves and Mr. Smith seconds.
Mr. President, this is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
This is, ladies and gentlemen, public comment period for today's meeting on non-agenda items and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. Public comment for today is closed. Next item.
Next item is our items for which public hearings have been held, items 1 through 13.
Members, items 1 through 13 now before us. Public hearings have been held in committee. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Seeing no such motion, do we have any requests for specials, items 1 through 13? 1 through 13, seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved.
And the-
Item 1 is an ordinance that carries over for a second reading.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 14 through 29. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, I do have cards on item 28. We'll call that special. Without objection, items 14 through 29 shall be considered by the City Council today. The balance of the items, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. Public hearings are opened, public hearings are closed. Any specials, Mr. Parks.
I'm sorry, I missed number 5. We had some questions at the committee that they were going to bring additional information to the council.
Okay, we'll take a motion for reconsideration in just a second.
Reconsideration, number 5.
Mr. Zine?
29, please, special.
29 called special by Ms. Zine. Any other specials on 14 through 29?
I believe Councilmember Han had amendment on item 24 and 25. It was just a technical amendment. She's not here, but that was to accept insurance instead of including insurance if somebody would make that motion.
Okay, Mr. Labange moves. Any further discussion on 24, 25? If not, we can consider these items as amended. Items 14 through 27 now before us. 28 and 29 have been called special and we do have 12 members present. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Let's go back to item number 1, an ordinance. We took a vote with only 11 members present. Mr. Parks moves reconsideration of item number 1. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
And we now have 12 members present on item number 1, which is an ordinance. Let's reopen the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved on first reading. Mr. Garcetti?
Can we reconsider item number 6 and continue it to our first meeting in March?
Okay, members, motion for reconsideration of item number 6. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved and without objection, continue to the first council meeting in March.
And that would be March 2nd.
March 2nd is the date. Let's open the roll on reconsideration of item number 5. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. Item 5 now back before us and called special by Mr. Parks.
Yes.
Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, are the closed session items 30 through 33, and I believe there is a card on item number 30. Do you wish to take that public comment up now?
Let's hold all closed session items on the desk and we'll take public comment for closed session items just before going into closed session.
The next item then would be item number 5, which was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks?
Mr. Chair, I'd like the city staff to come up. We'd ask for some information regarding the 11 awardees as it relates to our financial management, as to where the locations of these businesses and whether the percentage or number of city employees that currently were employed. So we'd like to ask them to come up and comment on that.
Do we have city staff here on item number 5? If they can come forward at this time? We have CAO's office. Is that who we're waiting for?
Yes, they were at the committee, but they didn't have the information we needed.
Are we ready, Mr. Fajoca? Should we hold this on the desk? Let's hold this on the desk while the staff is on their way. We'll come back to this later on in the meeting. Next item, please, Madam Clerk.
Next item, Mr. President, would be item number 28 and that was called special for cards from the public.
Okay, this is item 28, an item in Council District 4. Mr. Labange, did you want to say anything before we go to public comment on item 28?
Mr. President, good morning. I would like, on this item, when I introduce this motion, that it be heard in executive session in this matter, on that. I also know people have come down to speak to this issue and I would welcome any public comment that someone would like to express on this. This is a case that has been longstanding within the city of Los Angeles. It predates my time or my involvement on this issue. But I think it would be incumbent upon us to have an executive session a week from today so that we could have it in council and have the city attorney report on it. As you may or may not know, this case was heard in federal court and I think all of us should be briefed by the city attorney on matters related to it so we know what next steps are made as it relates to the land use of a property in a single-family neighborhood.
Okay.
Thank you.
I know we have Mr. Weiss and Mr. Race waiting to be heard. Colleagues, let me say something for clarification here. This is a motion introduced by Mr. Labange, which if approved, calls for the council to agendize this in closed session. It's not agendized for closed session today. We do have members of the public here to speak on the motion itself. So let's hear next from the members of the public who are here to adjust the council and know that any action today would not be an action on the case, but rather the motion, which calls for a closed session briefing on the matter. Is that clear? Okay, let's proceed then with public comment on item number 28, beginning with Marsha Rubin, followed by Edward O'Carroll, Michael Rosenberg, Rabbi Rubin, and Rabbi Kalodny. If you would all please form a line behind the podium, we'd appreciate it.
Mr. President, Mr. Counsel, Mr. Labange, great matter. My name is Edward R. O'Carroll and I have just been employed by the shul to come and lobby for them and to take the matter any later we have to go here. I've been an elected official. I worked here at Congress. I worked the Civil Rights Act and so forth. This hurts me. This is one of the greatest cities in Los Angeles. This is the case for over 30 years, a group of people want to pray to God in their own neighborhood. 30 years. Somebody from City Hall and a group of outside, small amount people came with a lot of pressure that we- Somebody from City Hall and a group of outside, small amount people came with a lot of pressure that we believe on certain people in City Hall to go and stop them from praying to their God. Very clearly, building a safety came out, came out, came out, and threatened them, and threatened them, and threatened them, and then they told them, "You gotta get a conditional use permit." Fine, they applied for the conditional use permit. Of course it was denied. So these people are being denied to pray to their own God in their own neighborhood. They don't bother anybody, but they get, there's some people in that neighborhood that don't particularly want these people to pray to their God. Now, and this is the point, this is the only point. The case is settled. Three circuit courts have ruled that this act is constitutional. It going no place, but now, on this motion, on this motion, if it's passed, will allow the city to employ private counsel to go and get the group of people. That's it. The city is going to employ private counsel. It says so right here, very clear, to go and find a way to get the people not to pray to their God in their own neighborhood.
Thank you. We have other speakers to hear from. Just wanted to be fair with the time. Marcia Rubin, are you ready to be heard? Please come forward, and if Michael Rosenberg, Rabbi Rubin, and Rabbi Kalodny, if you would please form a line behind the podium, we'd appreciate it.
Good morning, I'm Marcia Rubin. I'm the wife of Rabbi Rubin, and I've been watching this case unfold for about nine years. I've been before this body before. We've been before the zoning administrators. We've been in federal court. We've been in state court. We've been everywhere. I believe we've taken the high road. I believe that we have done everything that we were asked to do, and we have prevailed. And we were again hit with stop work orders, with orders to cease and desist, to stop what we were doing, went back to court, and once again, we prevailed, to the point where I believe that the city of Los Angeles had a threat of being in contempt of court for not allowing us to go forward. We've gone forward. We've completed our building. We've done it to the letter of the law, everything that we were asked to do. We are poised and ready now to move in, and all of the sudden, a week ago, we see this motion being put again before city council. I absolutely feel like we were blindsided by this motion. It was a reaction of, again, absolutely incredulous that the city council wants to once again visit, revisit, and revisit again, something that clearly is no longer an issue that should be before the city council. It has been heard by the courts, a settlement in front of magistrate judge, and an agreement was, we came to. It was approved, this agreement was approved by the city council, and now it just appears that there's another attempt to find a back door to get in, to subvert our ability to do what we have the right to do under the law. I absolutely believe for the city of Los Angeles to allocate funds to go to get private counsel at this point in time, when there's barely enough money to provide for basic health and safety for the citizens of this city, to go and just, I feel personally harassed and be made not allowed to pray with my family, to pray with my friends, to bring my child, who is handicapped, to a synagogue in walking distance according to the laws of our God, something that I find just unconscionable. And I'd like to just submit that to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the city council. My name is Michael Rosenberg. I'm the co-chairman of the certified neighborhood council called Greater Wilshire Neighborhood Council. This is the council that governs this property. I have received dozens of calls from stakeholders opposing this motion. This matter should have been brought before our neighborhood council. We are the council that should have reviewed and see what the problem is with regards to this property. We are always concerned, excuse me, about spending city funds to pay for outside councils. We are rather interested to find out why do we need to hire attorneys to look at a matter that's already been adjudicated. Are we going to start as a city to reopen every other settlement that the city has chosen to settle? I don't think that this is the right and prudent way to spend the city funds. There are many homes that have been used for places of worship in the city of Los Angeles, and we believe that praying is a wonderful thing for communities, and it should be remained that way. I also wanted to note that the motion called that this is a huge temple, which in fact is not. I believe that a huge temple will be reserved for the Wilshire Temple, which is on Wilshire Boulevard near our council, and also the newly-built cathedral here downtown. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, good morning, Mr. President, members of, honorable members of the council. My name is Rabbi Chaim Kalodny. I have one point I would like to make. I've been here before, and that was to receive an award from this body. The reason I'm here today is to question why city council, as a body, has to revisit what Mrs. Rubin said, things that have gone through federal court. There are a number of statutes and laws written by federal court which the city of Los Angeles finds at fault, and yet we are not asking for extra counsel to go and fight those. This shul, this small synagogue, which I am called almost on a daily basis to come be the 10th person for the quorum, because there's not even 10 people in this shul in the middle of the week, has never, ever done anything to anybody in the community. There's never been any loud parties. This is not, I mean, right now, we're praying on June Street where there's the British Council General lives. There are parties there every week, blocks up traffic, the entire blocks. Nobody has ever complained. It is only because they are scared of this yarmulke. I walk on that corner. I live in that neighborhood. We have never, ever done anything to anybody in that community to say that we're doing something wrong. We are there, just let us be. It's a small shul. It's a very small shul. And one point about Rabbi Rubin. He has done more for this community than many people that are fighting Rabbi Rubin right now. The impetus to start Hat-Salah of Los Angeles, the only volunteer emergency medical rescue team in the city of Los Angeles, was Rabbi Rubin. The first office for Hat-Salah of Los Angeles was in the shul of Rabbi Rubin. Rabbi Rubin has given countless and countless dollars, time, and energy towards this community. He is dedicated to community. All of us part of the shul are dedicated to the community. We love this community. We live in this community, and we'd love to see us, everybody, get along in the community. Thank you.
My name is Rabbi Rubin, and it's not necessary to give me an award after his speech. I'm just going to reiterate a little bit of what was said here before. We have had a dispute between our congregation and the city over the rights to locate in a residential area. The city took its position, and the congregation took its position. Each of us was formidable advocates in each other's position. Living in a society like we do, it's ultimately resolved in a court of law. We went to the court of law, and that was resolved there in our favor. Everyone has rights of appeal, and that went ahead, too. Try whatever legal maneuvering you can to come back and try to win some strength in your position, and that's acceptable, too, even though it's costly and even though sometimes you have to look to the motivation as to why it's done. But if we, let's put that aside, you have your right to do it, and it's done. After we prevail, we follow, we, the city and our congregation enters into an agreement. We hammered out an agreement. It was a negotiated agreement. It wasn't a one-sided slam dunk deal. We sat down with members of the city council here, and we hammered out in front of a magistrate. We, our congregation, gave in, the city gave in, and an agreement was reached. I thought, at that time, after I reached an agreement approved by the magistrate, approved by this formidable body, that I had a valid contract, a valid agreement with the city of Los Angeles. And based upon that, we went ahead, spent enormous amounts of money, obtained building permits by the Department of Building and Safety, were granted the building permits, and began to build our shul. And as we began, the permit was attempted to be revoked. There's rights within the city to try to do that, within fitting into the, to certain conditions. This didn't meet those conditions, but it was attempted anyway. Again, back to court. Judge says, "No, no, it's got a valid permit." So we start again. Then we're harassed by every single inspector from the Department of Building and Safety. We go back to court again. Again, the judge says, "Listen, guys, I'm not going to put up with this. You either let the rabbi build his shul, or there's going to be a contempt." And after that hearing, we were given what we're entitled to, and that's to build our building. Now we're complete. We want to move into our building, and a new motion comes before this city council. How do we attempt to stop the rabbi again? We tried to do it legally in court. We didn't succeed. We tried to do it with the pressure on Department of Building and Safety. We didn't succeed. Now that the rabbi has spent his money, built his building, the only thing we've got to stop is those people going into this synagogue to pray. How do we do that? You know what? The city attorney just isn't a good enough lawyer. Let's go out and hire some outside counsel, because the city has so much of a surplus that we can't get a traffic light in a dangerous intersection because there's no money, but there's money to fight the rabbi to not allow him and his congregation to pray. Please see through the real intent. Please see through what's really going on in our neighborhood, a neighborhood whose demographics have been changing, a neighborhood who has Orthodox Jews moving into it, and whether we want to believe it or not, there are still people in this city who just don't like us. Some people don't like blacks. Some people don't like Latinos. Some people don't like gays. Some people don't like Orthodox Jews. It's a fact of life. It's unfortunate. It's very unfortunate. But don't this honorable body in the city of Los Angeles should endorse that type of conduct?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This concludes public comment for item number 28. Returning to council discussion, Mr. Labange.
Members, thank you very much for your very strong feelings there. I just think it's very important that at some time in the future that we have a discussion with our city attorney to lay the land use element of this case out, because it affects properties throughout the city. And I want to make sure, and members, when we, when we sometimes have an issue that goes before a court, sometimes we don't even hear about what happened in court and what the procedures are, how it affects other issues. Residential neighborhoods in the city of Los Angeles, and God bless you, Rabbi, and God bless your wife and all who came down, and your efforts and your belief. It's absolutely wonderful to have a belief, and it's also wonderful to pray, but it's also wonderful in this city to have a residential neighborhood. And this is a conversion of a single-family dwelling that was approved by settlement by a federal court, and I want a full understanding of that, and I want to be able to have that understanding be taken to the neighborhood, if that is the case, if that is the case. But I think it's incumbent upon us to have a discussion with our city attorney in closed session, and if there are options that were laid out in this motion, we discuss it in closed session, and if we believe that, then we go forward. If we don't, then we don't go forward. But I think it's very important that we have this discussion on this issue, because it relates to single-family houses throughout the city of Los Angeles and their importance to the residential character of a neighborhood. Thank you.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to say a couple preliminary things, colleagues. First, I want you all to know that geographically, this property is located within Council District 4. It's literally across the street from Council District 5, and it's at a part of our district where, Mr. Lab, you know, if you blink or sneeze, you could walk easily from 5 into 4 and back and forth, as everybody does who lives around there. And so it's a matter that has an impact in my district as well as in Mr. Labange's, and Mr. Labange knows full well how strongly I feel about the extraordinary job he does for his constituents. I said it when I was at Lucy's El Adobe with you the night you won his council seat, that you are the absolute gold standard in the city of Los Angeles when it comes to serving your constituents, and you are someone that I try, I'll never, I'll never get there. I'll never get the pumpkin bread. I'll never get the walks up the hill, but you're someone that we all try to model ourselves after when it comes to serving the neighborhood. And I know that that is exactly why you have brought this motion before us in absolute good faith, good faith desire to serve your constituents, and I respect that a great deal. Now, my understanding of where we are legally is that we are basically at the end of the road. In fact, we're off the road. There were several years of federal litigation about this property, too many in my view. Perhaps it wouldn't have happened if you and I had been here on the council at that point, Mr. Labange. I believe the two of us could have resolved it many years ago, but be that as it may, there were several years of litigation, and the result was a settlement agreement that has been signed and entered by the city, by the congregation, entered in federal court. As all of you know, I used to practice in federal court. May I have some extra time, Mr. President? I really would appreciate it. It's been entered in federal court in front of Judge Hupp, in front of whom I used to appear, one of the most respected and fair-minded judges on the federal court in the nation, I will tell you. And I have read Judge Hupp's orders subsequent to the entry of that settlement agreement. I have him here, I've read them. He is very upset with the way the city of Los Angeles is posturing itself in this matter legally. I believe he has good grounds to have become upset over the past year or two. I think it would be very foolish for this council to do anything further to anger Judge Hupp, because he has had enough. One other legal thing that has transpired in the past year or two, I could be wrong on the chronology, is following the entry of that settlement agreement, the city, Building and Safety, I guess, issued a building permit. After holding on to the matter for a couple months, it issued the building permit. The building permit flew out the window. It's a valid permit. It prompted Judge Hupp in one of his orders to ask sort of riley, "How many cities of Los Angeles are there?" The city issued the building permit. It's a lawful and enforceable building permit. The settlement agreement is lawful and enforceable, and legally, as painful as it may be for some in that neighborhood, I do believe that is the end of the story, and that ought to be the end of the story. The neighbors recently filed a lawsuit. City of Los Angeles is named as a defendant in that lawsuit. That lawsuit has been dismissed under Federal Rule 12B6 by the federal court. It's, if they don't file a new complaint, it's over, 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 over. And so, as much as I understand the emotions of this, I don't believe that this is a proper matter for the city to continue to exercise its power, its governmental power, to get out there and stir the pot more. Certainly, if you talk about the pot of money, we have none. We have no money to hire new cops. We have no money to put that 10th man everywhere we want in the fire department. We can't hire outside counsel. There's certainly no cause for outside counsel. There's no conflict. There's no showing of dereliction of duty or any, you know, part of our city attorney's office. They've more than aggressively litigated this matter. I therefore make the following motion. I don't think we should hear the matter in council. I think the matter should be referred to Mr. Reyes's committee, the Planning and Land Use Committee, for consideration, if it's appropriate, of Mr. Labange's motion. I would make the following addition in my motion, though. I think we should vote to reject the request for outside counsel today at this time with the budget situation this city is facing, and the fact we're about to have a briefing in closed session about what our, what our options are vis-à-vis Sacramento. We can't be holding the door open to spending money on outside counsel when there is literally no cause, legal cause, to do it. So send the matter to Plumb, but reject the request that was made in good faith for outside counsel. That's my motion. I appreciate your indulgence with the extra time, Mr. President. I appreciate your indulgence with the extra time, Mr. President.
Is there a second?
Mr. Garcetti seconds. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Again, I want to just echo Councilmember Weiss's words about Councilmember Labonge's efforts in representing this community. And colleagues, I did second this motion, but nowhere in this motion does it say that it does not go to Plum. And I think there's a miscommunication, because I didn't hear that request of me as Chair of Plum to take it out of my committee. And quite frankly, I would not have done that. I really believe that if we're going to assess the land use issues, and as Councilmember Labonge has articulated, has an impact on the residential zones throughout the city, we should understand what that impact is. And I believe there's a reason why we have these committees, so that we can go through these issues at that level of analysis and come up with a report or recommendation, so we can understand what our alternatives should be, both from a legal point of view, from a land use point of view. Those are the critical issues and points that we should be discussing in committee, and we could have that in closed session, because I know this is a very delicate situation, and provide for you some point of view, weigh out the pros and cons, and put forth an assertion that we can put for a vote. That's why I would like to recommend to Councilmember Labonge that we do send it to Planning, Land Use and Management. Let's go through this process. We can have closed session in Plum and provide for you, the council, the pros and cons, weigh out the issues, so that we know where we're going. Otherwise, it becomes another item for the whole council, and if we're going to start conducting business this way, then we should plan to be here from 8:00 to 5:00, and forego the committee process. So I ask you, it's not that I want to belabor the point, I don't want to stretch out issues that don't need to be stretched out, but now that we're here, I think it behooves us to send it to Plum. It behooves us to provide the kind of support and analysis that'll give us the kind of direction that we can understand. Thank you.
Ms. Miskowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I share a lot of what has been said on all sides. And this is obviously a complicated issue. It's been a complicated issue. It's larger complicated in terms of the issues and impacts citywide, but it's a narrow issue relative to the history, the case, the actions that are taken, et cetera. While I agree that on the issue, this motion included a lot of things, including outside counsel, that I think have been well spoken to already, I do believe that it's appropriate, per the request of this motion, that we go into executive session. So my motion is that we go into executive session to hear from the city attorney relative to a lot of the recitation that I think Mr. Weiss gave us, but let's hear from the city attorney relative to this, and then discuss options. It may very well be that the recommendations would then go to committee to look at other options, et cetera. But let's at least, it's on the agenda today, we have the right to go into executive session, the city attorney's here. I move that we go into executive session and then continue it. We've got three or four other executive session items today. Let's have this discussed at that time. But I do share the sentiments, and I think if the recitation of facts, as Mr. Weiss gave them, are the recitation of facts, and there's nothing more on this case, then so be it. The issue with the city attorney as to what are we doing in other cases, what's happening nationwide, that is probably something to more appropriately go to the Plum Committee for hearing, for sensitivity, for suggestions and direction. But let's go ahead. So my motion is to move this to executive session for the discussion with the city attorney relative to this case.
Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none. We have a couple of motions before us now. Madam Clerk, the first vote.
The first motion, Councilmember Miskowski moved that council hear this matter in closed session today.
Okay. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, let's open the roll. Roll is open. All members have had an opportunity to vote. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Seven ayes, six noes.
Okay. That motion does not carry. Next motion.
Mr. Weiss made a motion to refer this matter to Plum and to vote to reject the outside counsel, and that matter would be voted on then today to reject the outside counsel.
Just to make it clear, members, I think it's real important that we have a discussion, that we have a discussion on an issue that predates many of us, that we have our city attorneys here, just as Cindy said, on that issue there, okay, on this issue, that it's very important. And then also, it's very important, when this discussion is completed, that we have a public discussion about this. Because I think one of the challenges that we have is sometimes settlements are made by the city, but the people in the community don't fully understand the settlements, don't fully understand the options that are available. And that's what I think is so challenging on the land use case related to 303 South Highland. So I just wanted to make that point, Mr. Reyes, because there's a whole lot of people who have a concern about this in other areas, in Alvarado Terrace, in Santa Ana, in other areas.
Mr. Labonge, this was a point of information?
Always.
Okay. We're ready to proceed with the vote. Mr. Varegosa.
Yes, I have a question, Mr. President. And procedurally, can, if this were to go to committee, and then committee sends it here, could we then have that closed session on this matter?
Absolutely. The closed session, if there's any legal, for the legal part of the argument.
If that's the case, members, I would argue that the chairman of Plum is correct. You know, we need to put a process in this House, in this council, that respects the committee process. We go to the committee, let the committee address this issue, they can bring it back on the floor, on the council floor. We can have a closed session to discuss this. I certainly agree with Councilmember Labonge that we should have that discussion, but let this go through a committee process in the way that is customary in this House.
Just a point of information, this has been discussed several times, and my intent of the motion was to come into, to all of us in the closed session on that, although Mr. Reyes has, as he said, felt that it was going to his committee. It was always to have a discussion, to get an update.
Okay. Let's proceed with the vote. We have the Weiss motion before us.
And then it's to vote, matter referred to committee and vote to reject the outside counsel.
Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Okay. Is that clear to everybody in the audience, what just happened here? Okay. Next item, please.
Item number 29 was called special by Councilmember Zein.
Mr. Zein.
Mr. President, I'd like to continue this until Friday, on the advice of the city attorney.
Okay. Is there any objection to continuing this matter until Friday? If not, item 30 is continued. Excuse me, item 29 is continued to this Friday, which is January 16th. Next item, please.
Item number five is still on the desk. Councilmember Parks had called that special.
Do we have staff here on item number five?
They provided the information, so we can just wave on five.
Okay. Any further discussion? Item number five? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Item number five once again is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, there is a special--
Can we, for Mr. Labonge, can we reconsider item 22 and hold it on the table, please?
Sure, we have a motion for reconsideration of item 22. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Item 22 is now back before us, and we'll call it special. Give Mr. Labonge a few minutes to regroup here. Colleagues, we also have a special agenda which was posted for 10:30. It is now just shy of 11 o'clock. Let's temporarily recess the regular meeting. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the special meeting.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grill, Han, Labonge, Liddell, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Varegosa, Weiss, Zein, Padilla, thirteen members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Item number one of the special meeting agenda is now before us. I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. On this item, public hearing is therefore open and closed. Any discussion on this item?
This was a report from Bureau of Street Services and Bureau of Engineering.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate, I know we have staff here on this matter to deal with the issue we dealt with last week, having to do with hiring of the 26 folks for Benedict Canyon. I want to let you all know, if you could just come forward just for a second, I really appreciate how hard you all have worked to sort of scrub the books and figure out a rational way to do it. And I want you to know, again, how extraordinarily grateful I am and my constituents are for the fantastic work that you're doing on this project, which is a terribly important project, decades in the making. And maybe you could just give us a very brief synopsis of how you've resolved this problem. And I just want you to know in advance that I really appreciate what you've done.
Thank you, Councilman. Bill Robertson, Director Bureau of Street Services. As Councilmember Weiss stated, this is a very, very important project, one that we have been working collectively on for a number of years. And unfortunately, over the last 18 months, we've been in a hard hiring freeze, at least for our bureau, a hard hiring freeze. We've seen 175 individuals leave our bureau. That equates to 17 field crews with structured a 10-man to a crew. But what we've done with the anticipated cuts that were taken in the UB, we have constantly been moving individuals from out of the various programs that have already been cut, utilizing them in other areas where we have special funding. In this case, the general fund programs that the bureau has available to them, to us, are limited. We have the sidewalk repair program, we have our street use inspection division, and then we have our we debatement programs. Those are the only three general fund, large general fund items that I have in my budget. Unfortunately, the Benedict Canyon project requires a number of those individuals to be moved over in order to do this work. There has been much discussion about an impending cut in the sidewalk repair program, a further cut of approximately 31 miles. If that cut takes place, I will be able to fully fund, fully man the Benedict Canyon project, and will take the additional people that are involved with the sidewalk program and spread them over the other functions in the bureau, so we won't have any layoffs. If that cut does not come forward, it means that I have to move a minimum of 11 people immediately over to Benedict Canyon, which will result in a five-to-eight mile cut, just moving those individuals over to go ahead and start this program. Now, the resurfacing program was cut earlier in the year. We planned for that cut, we moved those people out of the resurfacing program and moved them into our water blowout program. These people, in order to take, will take over the resurfacing portion of this project, so we'll just move people from that function back into this function. So I think right now that the bureau can work through this, we can get this project started, we can get the project moving with no additional cost to the city.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and nice work, Mr. Weiss, in terms of being able to make sure that the constituents along Benedict Canyon get the repair that they need. I just wanted to hear from the CLA, the confirmation. I know that this is certainly Mr. Weiss's understanding, that if we're moving some folks off of sidewalk repair or other things, that reflects what was going to be a reduction that we're going, that'll go through no matter what, that if we weren't to pass this today, it's not directly taking that away from any sidewalks or whatever that we would do otherwise. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And--
And what this allows, which is what we're trying to do with the hiring freeze, it saves people's jobs, because we have another funding source, and we're moving them to a funding source that is not general fund, and this is exactly what we're hoping will work, because we, at the end of the day, are not going to be able to fund those general fund positions.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Weiss, for continuing to bring the paving that your district and the citizens of Los Angeles deserve, and doing that in a way where people aren't losing their jobs, and I'll be in full support of this.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Hold on, Mr. Parks.
This may have been answered.
I'm just asking you to pause for a second while we get order. Behind the horseshoes getting loud back here. Colleagues, I really need your cooperation, especially that of your staff, to maintain our working environment. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This may have been answered, I just want to make clarify, in the moving of the people in the sense of into this project, is it going to impact any other district's general fund sidewalk repair programs? Pardon? Okay, and that's what I want to know, to what degree--
But it, these are not, the only, the issue here is that you have a funding source that is not general fund, that you're in a position to allow these people to have a job in the meantime. Before this is over, you're going to cut those other things anyway. Those are gone.
But I want to find out--
What's happened, you, you're going to take actions to reduce sidewalks, notwithstanding. This, the only thing this adds is a place to allow these people to be shifted to a non-general fund project, to allow them to continue to be city employees and avoid a layoff situation that we're going to be faced in the next six months.
Let me just ask, clarifying. You're saying that what they're moving from would not get done anyway? Is that what we're saying?
That's my, yes.
Okay. And so the issue is, is that the programs that are funded, that are going to get done, will not be impacted, only those cut programs will be impacted?
The cut programs will be, we're going to reduce the general fund for a lot of things, including sidewalk repair. Mr. Weiss's project is not impacting the other projects, but it is allowing people who are going to be in those, not going to be, have a place to go on those projects, to have a project that is not general fund funded.
Okay. I understand Mr. Weiss's part, I just want to make sure that we did not have funded projects in other areas that these resources were being moved. If they're going to be cut, that's another story, but if we're going to have projects undone, that would be concerned of mine.
I just want to tell Mr. Dean that I'm certainly going to report to Mr. Yaroslavsky that you called it Mr. Weiss's project. I appreciate that.
I'm sure Mr. Yaroslavsky is listening, and that won't be required.
Other members wishing to be heard on this item? If not, Madam Clerk, is action needed? Can we note and file this report?
No, it's just a note and file report.
Okay. With that objection, this matter is noted and filed. Let's now adjourn the special meeting and return to the regular meeting. We have received a request from Councilmember Labonge to reconsider item 22. Let's open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay. And Mr. Labonge also wishes this matter to be continued to this Friday, January 16th, unless there's an objection. Item 22 is now continued. Mr. Reyes.
Yes, Council President, I'd like to move if we can reconsider item number eight.
Members, motion for reconsideration of item number eight. Let's open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Eight now back before us. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I thank you for indulging me here. The reason why I wanted to call this item special in that, I thought it was important that we share with you the context in which this Westlake BID is being formed. And I think it behooves to inform the community and those watching that we have a comprehensive approach to dealing with the Westlake-McArthur Park area. We know it has received, over the decades, a lot of bad press, it has received the kind of image that, quite frankly, even in our tourist books, it speaks to the drug trafficking and the prostitution in MacArthur Park, despite the fact that it's a beautiful gem, it's a beautiful park with a grand history. So we've been fulfilling what we call the neighborhood agenda. We've been moving on the public safety, and both Chief Brandon and Mayor Han have been tremendous in this. We've dedicated a 24-hour, 24/7 police presence in the park. We have dedicated a senior lead officer, who's been tremendous there in their work, a permanent bike patrol. But more importantly, folks, those of you who choose to go to MacArthur Park to buy drugs, I want you to know that we have programs, though, that we have undercover officers who will arrest you for going to MacArthur Park to buy drugs. I want to make sure we understand that. It's a supply and demand issue. The reason why the folks who are selling drugs are there, because people come and buy, we're going to cut off the demand. We will arrest you. So if you want to come to MacArthur Park and buy drugs, you will get arrested. From an economic development point of view, we have a very clear change in that our office buildings at the perimeter of this park, who have been vacant, have not been converted to loft residential units. So a tremendous change in how the local area is evolving, tremendous presence of residential uses. We have an exciting Will Schabro project, will be a mixed use, in accordance with the MTA, that is evolving. And we also have a unique experience here in that we're working to bring in Walgreens, we have a business investment district, which this motion is about. And just as important, we have two new schools that have already been constructed. just as important, we have two new schools that have already been constructed, we have an adult education facility at Wilshire and Alvarado that's being put forth on a bond measure, and we have a Comune Nuevo charter school, a charter school that was being supported by many private folks, like Kirk Douglas was here with us the other week, who have promoted the kind of development for education in that area. As you know, this is an area of at least 30,000 persons per square mile, it rivals Manhattan, so I want to thank you for your support and supporting this BID. It's another step in a comprehensive approach in dealing with and improving an area that has long, long waited for these changes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to stand up and praise Mr. Reyes for his leadership in MacArthur Park area. My district abuts it to the north, and I know it's one of the toughest areas in the city to do anything with, but to see the community coming together, to see the progress that you've made there, everything from the signage in the area, the historical signs, to, we all know Mama's Hot Tamale's and the street vendor project that you've done there, you've really exercised leadership in turning around an area that is perhaps the toughest in the city to turn around, and I'm glad this business improvement district is moving forward. I think business improvement districts throughout the city do a remarkable job of helping work hand in hand with government. They certainly don't take the place of government, and I know that you've brought police resources, you've brought clean and green resources and other things to the area that help our government do the job, but it supplements that. And to see the business community coming together, we didn't have any funding in our bid trust fund at the beginning of the year, colleagues, but because of council action, and I want to thank you all, in areas that often don't have as wealthy business owners, we have money that we put in the trust fund from our block grants to allow places like MacArthur Park to have the same bids that other places do in wealthier areas. And I just think that what you've done in that area, Councilmember Reyes, is nothing short of remarkable, and there's been a lot of progress, a lot, long way to go as we know, but congratulations on the work and on the step forward.
Thank you very much. Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, do we wish to clear the desk before going into closed session? And there is a speaker's card on item number 30.
Yes, before we do that, let me recognize Mr. Parks.
Mr. Chair, could I have number 10 forthwith?
Forthwith on item number 10. And let's do housekeeping.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
And that clears the desk for closed session.
Okay, before going into closed session, we do have a speaker card on item number 30, Mr. Jim McQuiston, thank you for your patience, and Happy New Year.
Jim McQuiston, East Hollywood Community Association, I do want to say, what I came down to speak on today is the communication from the CLA and the CAO, which is not really technically in the closed session, because it doesn't pertain to anything that is to be talked about in the closed session. Thank you for the opportunity of saying this. One of the problems that we're having, the budget underrun is being vastly underestimated because we're not talking about the current account, we're talking about our bank account that's making up our budget this year. And one of the problems is, when we come to layoffs, the layoffs are going to be made by strictly seniority. And if you think about it, in your quiet times, what we have now is an amazing electronic system, which is generated and maintained by the newcomers, and they are going to have to be laid off according to our seniority schedule, and we will, we, without electronic communication, we cannot get along on this number, few number of employees without the electronic communication. If we have to hire outsiders, it's going to cost us more than retaining our employees. This is a major problem that's going to have to be worked out, and I suggest perhaps these people are actually public safety employees, because without them, the public safety is going to be shot. So think about that when we're thinking about the budget and finance items, and how we are going to reduce our personnel, which we probably are going to have to do, we have to maintain our electronic communications.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for item number 30, and I believe the rest of the items remaining on the desk are all closed session matters. Therefore, in conformance with California law, the council will now adjourn into closed session. Sergeants, please clear the chambers. Madam Clerk, next matter before us, please.
Item number 31, a settlement in the case of Mendez versus City of LA and its Hunter Lelay, and it's authorizing the LAPD to promote Mr. Mendez to detective, excuse me, from detective one to sergeant one, to pay the difference, and also to authorize city attorney to pay 88, 28 in city attorney's fees.
Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please. Next item.
Item number 33 is an inverse condemnation case, Bodikian versus City of Los Angeles, and that's in the amount of 298,521.98.
Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please.
And item number 33 is a workers' comp case, Thomas Pandola versus City of LA, that's 83 percent disability, 125,000, and 230, excuse me, 88, 90 per week thereafter.
Please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved.
And that clears the desk, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, colleagues. This is the end of our agenda today. Do we have any announcements? Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Again, want to invite folks out tomorrow to, at 10:00 AM, to Bimini Place, a block east of Vermont and a block north of Third, to celebrate the opening of Bimini Ecology Park. There, we'll have a lot of community goodies, as well as showing off some of the ecology elements of the park and our first wireless park in the city, so bring your laptop if you're interested in getting some access to the Internet. A second announcement is that our festivals booklet that comes out each year has been released, you can get this through your local council office or through the cultural affairs department. 364 festivals that are listed here throughout Los Angeles, including ones that are going on right now, so get your copy while they're hot.
Other announcements? Mr. Reyes.
Yes, thank you, Council President. I just wanted to, as it pertains to the northeast area, very exciting progress in the school board, want to congratulate the school board president, Jose Luis Sarn, and school board member David Tokovsky, in that we are now moving in a direction where in Taylor Yard, it's very possible we can have a new high school or junior high. A movement was made to essentially start taking control of that property, significant, significant, in an area where we need junior highs, we need schools, there's proximity to the river, can't be any more strategic. Just want to thank them for their great work, and we proceed in a direction that's going to be healthy for everyone. Thank you so much, school board members.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Other announcements? Ms. Miskowski.
I'd just like to announce to the general public to, they can come out today at 3:00 where Police Chief Bill Bratton with Mayor Han, and I think other members of the city council are going to be at West Angeles Church on Crenshaw Boulevard to get the first of the annual report on what we did in crime this last year and the crime reduction statistics, and then that will be followed in the community at that location by a briefing on the consent decree and what's going on in terms of policies of the police department. So it's open to the public, and I invite all members of the public to come and hear that report.
And I'd also like to encourage people to carpool to and from that event. Other announcements? Do we have adjourning motions today? Please rise for adjourning motions. Adjourning tributes?
Right here.
Mr. Veraigosa.
Yes, this is on behalf of myself and Mr. Ludlow. Mr. President, members, I'd like to adjourn memory of Susan Catherine Eaton, a Harvard public policy professor who died on Tuesday, December 30, 2003, of complications from leukemia at a hospital in Boston. She was 46 years old. Susan was born July 9, 1957, in Washington, and grew up in Alexandria, Virginia. She graduated as valedictorian of TC Williams High School in Alexandria. She spent her life as a champion for the rights of women and underprivileged workers. She arrived in Cambridge in 1991 after receiving a bunting fellowship at Radcliffe to work on issues of women leadership. After receiving her doctorate in industrial relations and organization studies from MIT, she took a position as assistant professor of public policy at Harvard, and prior to this, she worked for 12 years as a union negotiator, trainer and manager for SEIU in Atlanta and Washington. Her expertise was acknowledged nationwide, in recent years she was cited in over 30 publications regarding public policy and women's issues, and the legacy of Susan Eaton will live in her publications, her students and her family, and she's survived by her husband Marshall Gans, her mother Marilyn, father Wood, and sister Sally Masser.
Thank you very much. Other tributes? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.